I can't hear anything. Can you hear me? Can't hear anything.
I can hear you.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you, but I don't see anybody else in the meeting.
Yeah, and I can't hear anybody at the village board.
Maybe they might be too late.
Can you hear anybody beside me?
Nope, I can't hear, I can just see here only you.
I don't know what the problem is.
Let me see who's the part.
I don't know if they can hear us or not.
Can you see us?
Hello?
I'm not able to hear anybody else too.
Yeah, I don't know, I think they're working on it.
Trustee Dominiac, just to let you know, we can hear you. But at the senior center right now, there is some audio issues that they're troubleshooting. Okay. We can hear everybody that is remote, so we do apologize for this.
Okay, no worries. Thank you.
Thank you.
They're really quiet, but I can hear. Can they do another test?
Lori, can you test?
No, nothing has come. Let me try again.
We're back for roll call.
Sorry about that. We have trustee Pierce present, trustee Maisick present, trustee Peterson present, trustee Dominiac.
Present. Present. Present.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Polis?
Here.
Trustee Johnson?
Here.
Mayor Hanson?
Here. Okay, first, we have the approval of the February 24th, 2021 Committee of the Home Minutes, Meeting Minutes as presented. I'll need a motion in a second, please.
I'll make a motion to approve them as presented.
Motion by trustee Polis, second by trustee Pierce. Any questions, trustee Pierce?
No questions, your honor.
Trustee Maisick?
Questions.
Okay, trustee Peterson?
No questions, your honor.
Trustee Dominiac?
No questions.
Trustee Polis?
No questions.
Trustee Johnson?
No questions, your honor.
Okay. First item on regular business tonight.
Roll call.
Oh, I'm sorry, roll call.
Pierce?
Aye.
Maisick?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Dominiac?
Abstain.
Polis?
Yeah.
Johnson?
Aye.
My voting yes when abstains, motion is carried. We have five items tonight under regular business. Our first item is a liquor license request from Darney Gas and Food. I know he's here on screen. We can proceed with the, there's a presentation. Michael, anything that you want to bring to us? Have him present? Mr. Darney, ready to present? Mr. Darney?
You got your microphone on, Mr. Darney? You seem to be muted.
May have run.
Do we do the proclamation, your honor?
Yeah, let's, we'll go back to that. We'll skip item one so we can get back. Okay, we're gonna skip to the mayor's proclamation on Women's History Month.
A proclamation designated March as Women's History Month. Whereas, American women of every race, class, and ethnic background have made historic contributions to the growth and strength of our nation in countless recorded and unrecorded ways. And whereas, American women have played and continue to play a critical economic, cultural, and social role in every sphere of the life of the nation by constituting a significant portion of the labor force, working inside and outside of the home. And whereas, American women have played a unique role throughout the history of the nation by providing the majority of volunteer labor force of the nation. And whereas, American women were particularly important in the establishment of early charitable, philanthropic, and cultural institutions in our nation. And whereas, American women of every race, class, and ethnic background served as early leaders in the forefront of every major progressive social change movement. And whereas, American women have served our country courageously in the military. And whereas, American women have been leaders, not only in securing their own rights of suffrage and equal opportunity, but also in the abolitionist movement, the emancipation movement, the industrial labor movement, the civil rights movement, and other movements, especially the peace movement, which create a more fair and just society for all. Whereas, the village of Antioch has been honored to have strong and successful women serve in the community in leadership, elected, volunteer, and employment roles such as former mayors, trustees, and staff. And whereas, despite these contributions, the role of American women in history has been consistently overlooked and undervalued in the literature, teaching, and study of American history. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Mayor Lawrence M. Hanson, on behalf of the village of Antioch, designate the month of March as Women's History Month in the village.
Thank you. Okay. Again, first item, liquor license request from Darney Gas and Food. Are you available, sir? Mr. Darney, are you speaker on? Doesn't seem to be here. Mayor?
Yes.
There's a message I just came across. There's nothing being broadcast on the Antioch web. On the Antioch Zoom going out. You may not be able to see us.
I was able to see him and hear him earlier when you were trying to dial us in. I'm not quite sure what happened there.
Are you able to see us now remotely, trustee Dominiac?
I can see you, yeah. I see him. It says that he's here, but he's muted and there's no picture.
Right.
Whereas before, he was on camera.
Right.
Why don't we skip that item and see if he shows up again later on?
As you say, there's nobody hearing it at all. When they log on with the village portion. They can't see it. He's a pal.
He was on camera before and he and I were talking. You probably heard us talking. We couldn't hear you.
Mayor, I just logged into Zoom on my phone and am able to see the media.
All right, there you go. So is Mr. Darney available?
He's still showing up on my screen as being muted and not on camera.
Yep, that's how he shows on the screen here too.
Perhaps he stepped away.
Okay, we'll skip item one. We'll jump right to update on Clubland's clubhouse plans. Michael?
This matter comes to you this evening pursuant to our policy. The applicant, which is the Clubland Association, is requesting a waiver on their proposing to, the good news is to proceed with construction of a new clubhouse, $2 million project. But the challenge is, based on our analysis, would be approximately a $40,000 fee pursuant to our policy. Whenever somebody's requesting a waiver, this is the policy of the Antioch to come before the village board requests that. So I wanted to bring this matter for general discussion this evening. Get your input. If there's support for this, we bring back a resolution at the next board meeting. I do have some concepts in your package, the proposed concept of the clubhouse. We're hoping to start construction this year. So as you well know, this was approved back with the original PUD, when Newman developed this project. It was a master plan for a clubhouse. So after 151 new homes with the new developer, there is a commitment to expend a substantial approximately $2 million for a new clubhouse. So I know the residents are very excited to use this, to see this come to fruition. But pursuant to that, they are requesting a waiver of actual building permit fees. This would require a site plan review, and therefore, based on that fact, it would also be a waiver of the application for site plan, which is approximately $650. So pursuant to your input, staff is looking for your input on whether you're comfortable for a waiver of this building fee. With that, I'll be more than happy to answer any questions.
Okay, trustee Pierce, here. Any questions? Does it say that they're, I think it said they're splitting the cost of the fee? Association and the developer, the developer paying everything?
The developer is committed to expend, I believe,
1.5.
$1.5 million, based on the previous agreement they have. This is a separate agreement that they have specifically with the homeowners association. Village is not a party to that agreement, but obviously the developer has a major obligation for the construction of this development. I believe he will be the general contractor on this proposed project.
So the developer's agreed to do this, and now he's asking for money off? It's not the homeowners? He's just, I guess according to Paul, as Paul's just the association president, we had a conversation with him. They asked the current developer to be the general on it. That's his only involvement. They felt it would be a lot easier with the experience that somebody else has. The homeowners would have a tougher time trying to do that themselves. That's not really answering my question, but I appreciate that input. My question is, is the developer paying for this, or is the private association paying for this?
I'm sorry, the actual clubhouse itself?
For the fees.
For the fees? Typically, if they're the applicant, they'd be fully responsible for it. So the association, which I believe they would be, if they're the applicant for the building permit fees, I'm sorry, the building permit for this clubhouse, they would be responsible for paying the fees. So whether the applicant is, my understanding, the applicant would be the association, and therefore, based on that fact, because this is a neighborhood amenity, they're asking for a waiver of the fee.
And to make it a little clearer for the record, the documentation I've seen trustee Pierce shows that the developer is going to be contributing a capped amount, and he's going to be paying the full cap, so whatever. And the project will cost beyond that cap, so whether you take it off of, think of $40,000 off of a cap of 1.5 million, or whether you take it out of the homeowner's makeup of the balance, it still comes out of the project and ultimately is paid for by homeowners.
All right, thank you. That's all I have, your honor. Trustee Maisick?
I think we should waive the fees. I think these folks at Clublands have been promised, promised, and promised that clubhouse. Unfortunately, they've had builders go out of business. I think the fees would be made up. If they had events there, they may cater from different businesses in town. I think it'd be silly for the village not to waive the fees regardless of who would be putting it in there. It's an amenity that was promised to them. And for the village to stand in the way to prevent it would be just wrong. So I'm in favor of letting them do it and waive the fees. We probably get it back in an amenity of selling more homes, getting more people out there. It's a good thing for Clublands. I'm happy to see it move forward.
Thank you. Trustee Peterson?
I agree with trustee Maisick. These people bought those homes out there knowing, being promised, that they were going to have this clubhouse, and years and years later, they have nothing. So with this moving forward, I believe that the village should waive those fees. We have waived them before for associations. And I think that it's a good, it's a good idea to move forward and waive the fees, people. That's all I have, your honor.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Dominiac?
I have no questions.
Trustee Polis? I support waiving the fees off of. Trustee Johnson?
I don't have any questions, but I support us helping out any of our subdivisions or any of our HOAs that are involved in something like this. It's going to be good for all the residents, not all the residents, but that particular area. But I would support that for any of our subdivisions in throughout Antioch.
Okay, great. That being said.
I'll make a motion to bring it on the agenda. What's that?
I'll make a motion to put it on the agenda for the next meeting. Okay, motion by trustee Pierce to put it on the next board meeting minutes in April, our first meeting in April.
Second.
Second by trustee Peterson. I'll get the third take, please.
Trustee Pierce?
Aye.
Trustee Maisick?
Yes.
Trustee Peterson?
Yes.
Trustee Dominiac?
Yes.
Trustee Polis?
Yeah.
Trustee Johnson?
Aye.
Sixteen of the others. This motion is carried. This will be on the first meeting in April's agenda for regular business. Yes, yes, I see that. We have a liquor license request for Darney Gas and Food. Are you there, Mr. Darney?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, thank you. All right, tell us a little bit about your request that you're asking for, sir?
What I'm requesting is if we can get pouring license, which is like beer and wine license, not like full pouring license. So because we are right in the border, and there were gas taxes from the state of Illinois is like 30 cents higher than the state of Wisconsin, and then we are most affected because of the state license and this state taxes, and then now the Lake County has increased another four cents. And because of this, we have lost almost like 50, 60%, and then we don't know how much it will be affect us by raising another four cents by the Lake County. So what we're requesting is if we can get a pouring license, it's not like full pouring license, just a beer and wine, so we can get slot machines in so that we can raise some revenue and then bring income back in town. And that will just don't help us. It will also help the village in taxes. And it's not just the Antioch, it's just all around the border towns are doing this. I seen an awards worth is doing. Zion is in process of doing something like that. Lake Villa has combined there with something called G license, which is like combination of gas station plus the pouring license. So that enables the gas stations to have slot machines. McHenry Country is having, doing the same thing. And I know North Chicago is doing the same thing. So we want, those are more inland towns, but we are right in border town, and then we are losing left and right. So if a village can allow us some kind of pouring license, so we can have a slot, that will bring us extra revenue, plus help us the village too in the taxes.
All right, I can open it up to some questions. See, trustee Pierce, anything for, no questions, your honor. Okay, trustee Maisick?
And then I would just want to add, like, I have expanded and I spent money on this business to bring the, like, external, to like, beautification, like, so I added like more space, and that is next to the downtown that will add some value to the village of Antioch. So only thing I'm just asking is, is something village can do just to help us? It's not like we're asking any money from the village, or we can ask any grants. It's just like a, some, like a pouring license so that can help us in bringing more revenue. We already have a liquor license. We're just asking pouring license for a beer and wine so the village can do to help us.
Okay, you currently have a packaged liquor license, correct?
Correct, correct, correct. We have a full package liquor license, and then we are just asking like a pouring license just for a beer and wine, not the full pouring license.
I think it's my turn. Yeah. So my question is, the other gas stations that are, that are being talked about?
Yes.
They also carry diesel products, so the state law does have a open policy for how many, hold on, sir. Hold on, sir. They often have a policy which the attorney can talk about how many gallons pumped for diesel that's allowed that you can get it because of poor license. And the problem? And, and, and the problem, and, and the problem's not today problem with gas stations, it's going to be a future problem with gas stations, and it's the people that are put in office, the Green New Deal. It's coming down the road with more electric cars to solve the issue, and, and I feel the pain, I understand the problem. The pour license, you know, it's, it's a whole can of worms with, with that license. You know, fill up your gas, get a drink. We'd have mothers against drunk drivers. I understand the reasoning you wanted. I'm going to refer back to the village attorney to say how many gallons of diesel it needed to get that. I don't know if you meet that with the diesel amount of pour to get that. You could, we'd have to create a whole new brand of license. If we did that, I'm not in favor of giving a pour license to a gas station for a tasting contest and all that, because then I give you the whole right to do all that stuff. So I'm going to refer to the attorney to give the specifics on how many gallons of diesel that the state allows to give that, that license. Because then we'd have to maybe create a whole new brand of licensing to, to make this happen.
The problem is what you're talking, what trustee Mason is talking about is for a truck stop license. Truck stop requires, I think it's forty thousand gallons of diesel to be sold a month.
This is like ten, ten thousand gallons.
Please, sir.
Okay, go ahead.
There's more to it than that. The bigger problem is that you don't have enough land. They have, the last I saw on that statute, there was a minimum of three acres, and they were talking about increasing that to five. I don't know if they've gone that far. But if you had that much land, you can have a truck stop license. That's not the kind of license that, that you're eligible for on that space that you have here. So, you know, what you're talking about is an actual pouring license as, in the context of a bar or a restaurant, basically.
But it's not a full license. It's not a full liquor license, and what I'm saying is other towns with the same, same look size and the gas stations that I have, they're getting it.
I have not seen a town that has passed such an ordinance. I know it's been talked about, but I haven't seen that happen yet.
The information I have is like, what's worth have is there's two gas stations over there, and not like truck stop. They don't, they're not giving, they're not having that much of.
Roscoe's Reindeer Mart at one seventy-three and Green Bay Road. That is over three acres, and they sell more than forty thousand gallons, and they were, they were awarded one of the first truck stop licenses in Illinois.
The, I'm talking about the other one, the Citgo gas station on the opposite side.
That also, it also has more than three acres of land, because it's part of the PUD.
But then, I don't think, and then also the Lake Villa, the one on eighty-three and Grand Avenue.
Yeah.
The Citgo gas station there too, that's having the gaming license.
I don't know. I have not, like I said, I have not seen the ordinances being passed. They haven't been talked about in my peer group.
Only thing is this, if you guys can consider that, because we are on the, on the border, and then we are next to the, the state line, and we are the most affected. And then you can guess, like, put anything, like, review after every year. If that you, that will allow us to have this last every year review, if we have to give the, the pouring license or not.
No, that wouldn't work. That can't be done that way. You, you don't get to pull a license just because the year is up, but once you have it, you have it. And that's one of the issues that the board has to take into consideration.
Okay, so what it takes to consider?
Now, we got the board, we got more trustees that we would like to comment on. Trustee Peterson?
I'd like to ask the attorney a question. I seem to recall that there could not be a pour license if they were directly or closely located to a school.
Yeah, there's a, there is a problem with the location. We'd have to do the actual measurements between the school and the, and the gas station. Yeah, that's a hundred, I think state law right now is a hundred feet between the, between the two things, and then there's also a church right nearby.
Right next to it, right.
And that's another problem, problem spot that you'd have to do the measurement from.
Well, there's going to be children there as well, so.
Yeah.
I would not be in favor of this. I, I understand, and I, I feel bad that, that they're going through this. But we have, we have laws in place for specific reasons. And I just would not be in favor of this at all.
Thank you. Trustee Dominia.
I would echo trustee Peterson's comments and trustee Mason's comments, and not in support of this expansion into a gas station.
Trustee Paulus.
I have no question, your honor.
Trustee Johnson.
Yeah, I don't have any questions at this time, your honor.
All right. Okay, so we have. Everybody commented, we're not sure where to take this, because obviously, you know, some people have no comments. We, if they do want to bring this, they would have to forward it to the, to the whole board. My only question to you is, you keep talking about gaming, so what's more important? The beer or, and wine or the gaming?
More like a game.
Gaming's the most important? Okay.
Yes.
All right. So the beer and wine is just your step in the door to get.
Yes, correct. That's correct.
That would be the only way he could get gaming.
Exactly.
Yep.
So you're not concerned about selling beer and wine here?
Nope, I'm not concerned about, I'm just getting like how we can raise the revenue from the slots. I'm not concerned about, I, I don't know that, the pouring license, just to get a step into this, the gaming, so I can get the gaming. And the pouring, I'm not, I won't be able to raise any revenue from the, from the pouring.
Your honor, would you like? So it sounds like every other gaming salon we have, they, they care more about the gaming than do the beer and wine.
Correct.
Okay.
That's only the case in one location, it's my understanding. There might be more than one. So my observation, when I see people gaming, they usually have a drink with them.
Your honor, would you like to pull the board to see?
Yeah, let's pull the board, see if they want to forward this to the, to the, to the next meeting. Okay, I'll pull the board. Go ahead, why pull them? Clear? Okay, trustee Pierce, what you're doing?
I'm not interested, your honor. We've denied other people, so I'm not interested.
Trustee Mason.
I think there's questions that got to be answered, location, school, church. So I think there's questions that have to be answered before you even come close to putting this to the board, so. No.
Okay, trustee Peterson?
No.
Trustee Dominia?
No.
Trustee Paulus?
No.
And trustee Johnson?
I would like to see, if it was putting the cart before the horse, is at least let's take the measurements and see, this might be a new point. Might not even, you might even be able to do it, so that's my opinion.
Okay. All right, so we have a bunch of questions here that have to be looked at, and at present time, the board has no appetite to bring it to the next meeting at this particular time. So. So, okay?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Discussion regarding small business grant criteria. That's our next item.
Yes, thank you, your honor. Pursuant to our discussion before, staff was instructed to come back before the board with some different concepts and different criteria. As you well know, we've had a smaller business program for the past two months. We have approved at this point six small business applications to check that on out. But because of the, some of the restrictions, the previous criteria, we've been asked to revisit this matter, maybe perhaps create a more flexible program, which would be, which would open some opportunities up for small, additional small business opportunities. So the two real major impediments specifically were, a number of these businesses did not qualify specifically because they had grants. So we've requested that after removal of that proposal. So I have three concepts for a business application. I want to discuss that, get some input, so. Bear with me. So three concepts were, starts to change an annual decline of twenty percent. Right now, we have twenty-five percent.
Mike, I want to stop you. We lost the Zoom. Did we lose the Zoom or no? Okay, no.
He's sharing your screen.
So I'm sharing my screen, so, I'm sorry. So right now, we have twenty-five percent. Based on our proposal, the modifications are as follows. So we would change our criteria to allow, if a business owner, if you qualify, with, if you met one of these standards, you would potentially qualify for our new, again, our five thousand dollar small business grant. So we wanted to create something that would be more flexible and open for small businesses, since we know the challenges they're going through because of COVID. So based, again, this is staff's really proposal, and really want your input, honestly, we're on the right path. The first criteria would be, if in fact, you have a twenty percent reduction in gross sales from twenty twenty compared to twenty nineteen. Actually, based on this, we probably have an additional two or three applications, which would conform and meet this criteria. So that would be one way to be eligible. The second way to be eligible is gross sale, gross sale declines of fifteen percent in, in the, in any quarter in twenty twenty, based on our review of the numerous applications that, that have come before us. We've seen a dramatic shift between quarters. Clearly, the quarters where these businesses were closed, i.e. the first quarter of two thousand and twenty, we saw a dramatic, dramatic reduction in sales. So we thought it might be reasonable to, you know, compare different quarters. We saw an increase in state gross sales in the second or third quarter, when, during the summer, when some of these businesses were opened up. So that would be also a way to qualify. So the business could demonstrate that there's been the dramatic shift in their quarterly gross sales. That would also be one way to qualify. The third way to qualify would be, you can demonstrate that you're generating a positive net income in two thousand and nineteen, and also demonstrate that you had a loss in two thousand and twenty. Again, that's a pretty good reflection, the COVID, COVID nineteen's had a dramatic impact, negative impact on your growth business. So that, in reviewing these applications, the real impediments were the twenty-five percent gross sale decline. We did have six applications that we have approved that didn't meet that. I believe I'll have six more applications. I've been working with businesses over the past two and three weeks, two weeks, three weeks since we last met, to get additional information so they would qualify. So I, I'm glad to announce that we'll probably have six new businesses, which will have grants, will come before you at the next board meeting for consideration. But again, we still have some applications that still do not meet that twenty-five percent requirement. So again, the real impediments with approving these grants is the, A, the twenty-five percent gross decline, twenty-five percent gross decline between nineteen and twenty. We have two or three that have had previous grants. It's clear, based on reviewing their numbers and their narratives, that they've had a very negative impact on their businesses, and they're struggling. But because they did receive small business grants in the first quarter of two thousand and twenty, they do technically, they do not qualify. And the other thing I want to discuss is for gentlemen's, like, we did have a couple of businesses, which were over the half a million dollar criteria. We have a half a million dollar cap, based on our discussion. So I wanted to see that the board still supports that. That was lifted, that would also open up some opportunities for some of our restaurants, which probably have gross sales that exceed half a million dollars. So I know I threw a lot out there for general discussion, so the good news is that there's a lot of interest in small business grant program, and we're slowly getting funds out there to help these small businesses. But we think there's an opportunity to even get more approvals and additional funds out to the small business community. Another thing I want to discuss, if there is support to change the criteria, staff believes that it may make sense to open the application process up again for a defined period of time. Because to be fair, some of the applicant, applicants did not apply based on their original criteria, because they did not need it. So we changed the criteria. Now, it may make sense to allow more additional applications to come before the board. So with that, I'm really looking for your input. A program that I think there's a lot of interest in, and obviously, the recipients who have received the funds have been very, very grateful to the village board, and have been very supportive of what the village board has done. But we wanted to discuss this, change this criteria. With that, I'll be more than happy to answer your question.
Trustee Pierce?
Do you have any estimate on how many businesses this may help, or we just wait to see, once we reduce the criteria, who applies?
Well, with regards to the twenty-three application that we have literally in our file, I review this, this changing criteria would have, help probably half a dozen of those. And I would suspect that there was, I know, just based on previous discussions, would be probably under another half a dozen, if not more, applications that would come through the process. You can say those applicants or those businesses are real people. Those businesses did receive small business grants back in March and April, and, and that, those ones are long gone.
A year later.
So they're very interested, but they did not qualify because they had those grants.
Okay, thank you. I, I'm very happy to change our criteria to help our businesses and extend the date out for their applications. I think that we, you drive through Antioch, you can tell some of the businesses are hurting or, or no longer there, so we need to help them out if at all possible. But I'm happy to, to work this program to make it work. Some worked before, but we need to make it better, so we need to adjust it. On top of that, at the last meeting, we discussed we may be getting COVID funds from the federal government if we do. I'd like us to also look at, we've helped businesses, we've helped, we've helped people like that. But I think we could also look at using some of those COVID funds to help property owners, a little bit of relief on their property taxes, or even, as somebody suggested to me this weekend, a neighborhood grant program to help the neighborhoods fix some of the stuff in their neighborhoods that need fixed. So we need to help, we need to help everybody, and I'm happy to help the businesses right now. Thank you.
Trustee Mason?
Well, first, on the business, and, but, and always when businesses, there's always people that work in the business that need the help. Businesses need to help, and the people that are employed by the business, this is work to help. So I'm in favor of extending this, I'm in favor of extending the timeframe, so I'm, I'm good with helping businesses and the people that work in the business. And the idea of the COVID relief, there's specific rules that we got to be affirmed to, the candy shop giveaway program. There's mayors, there's, there's council people that looked at the specific laws and what that money goes for. It's not a giveaway program. They've got specific laws that have to be looked into, where that money goes and how it's allocated. So before everybody promises money out the door, and where that money goes, that it comes to the village, there's specific reasons and how that money's got to be used. So before anybody's up here making promises to where that money goes, they got to go to replenish pension money. If, you know, some mayors are trying to get the rules changed to, we're confused for infrastructure, which it's not supposed to, but they're trying to find loopholes with their attorneys, so there's a lot of loopholes where that money has to be used. So that's all I'm going to say about that. So I'm in favor of this program right here.
Trustee Peterson?
I'm in favor of this as well. That's all I have to say.
Trustee Dominia? Trustee Dominique, your speakers off.
Technology is terrific when it works. I just want to start by thanking the Economic Development Task Force and recognizing all the work that they've done, particularly Mr. Jim Kenny and Herman Bacchus, who served as the committee for reviewing all of these applications. And I am in very much in support of. And I am in very much in support of the revisions to this criteria and recognize that there are people out there who did not apply because of the previous criteria, and I would definitely support inviting them to try again. Thank you for all your work on this, Michael.
Thank you, trusty Pauls.
I'm in favor of uh changing the criteria, including the dollar amount threshold.
Jesse Johnson.
I too am in favor of changing the criteria and upping the dollar amount for sales.
Okay, and I too am in favor, I also sit on the Economic Development Task Force and um and I, we talked about it last Friday, and definitely for that, for these businesses. I also would like this board to think, um I had a little bit, I know uh trustee Pierce had mentioned about the neighborhoods and different things that we can do, infrastructure and other programs. Um now that the businesses are open, I think we need to look at other ways to the biggest thing we need to do is draw people into the community and the shop in these stores, because obviously I did some calculations on the money, if you start breaking it down, you know, it it becomes the five thousand dollars becomes days, not years, you know, and and obviously what you want to do is get the people back into this community to shop, that's what's gonna really save them, our people, not the again, five thousand dollars uh grants are gonna definitely help them. But the bigger picture is we need to start filling these stores up with events and do certain things, and obviously we should start creating uh advertising in some events, so people come back downtown and start spending money, that's gonna be the real success of this whole, this whole COVID thing.
Mayor Hanson, I believe that uh Mike is gonna speak to that when he speaks about the uh any or the Bucks program or the whatever that's.
Yeah, but I'm speaking now, um I'm just making my comments, I I understand that, so I have the floor, please. Um so anyways, that's my my take on it, so. So if the board wants to just go forward with it, we can just take a quick um then we'll take it to the next meeting. Trustee Pierce. Trustee Mason.
That's fine.
Yes.
Trustee Dominia.
Yes.
Trustee Pauls.
Yeah.
Trustee Johnson.
Hi.
Okay, we're gonna bring it to the next meeting to get officially voted on.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have Jim up and Joy to talk about our capital projects they've been working on.
Good evening, Your Honor, um I'd like to speak uh with the board and certainly solicit input on our capital projects that we are planning, some of these are existing projects, some of these are new projects. Or you were presented with a a first draft of of the budget, and we've had some meetings um with liaisons and department heads all already, we have a few left to do, I think we've covered um police, uh public works and and parks so far, those are the bigger budgets. Um but but really, the the budget as I see it this year is um the operational budget, I should say. Isn't really remarkable, it's 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 a very typical budget, it's very much like previous years. You know, we know we have some some things that are dynamic um in in that budget, but in in general, revenues are are holding strong um in our expenses, you know, we're controlling expenses. Um and the tr- the trend, you know, maybe impacted a little bit with COVID, but over the past several years, the trend of uh being being frugal with expenses and and only spending what what we need to spend and having revenues that have been increasing a bit have produced a a general fund balance over the years. And we haven't really had a large conversation about capital, and that's what I'd like to talk to you tonight about, so. You know, the and I guess the only other comment I'll say in in the beginning here is that the only real meaningful way to change this budget would be adjustments in capital. You know, I don't see a lot in the but if you said, I don't, I don't like where the budget is at right now, go back and cut the operational budget, I think that's gonna be very difficult um to come up with things that aren't going to be sorely missed or, you know, impact service. Um so the really, in my view, the only real meaningful way to make a big impact on this budget would be in in the capital department and and what we're doing with capital. Um as you know, and we've reported in the past, capital, there is no, there is no dedicated funding source for capital. Cap, the capital we do comes from several different sources, we kind of scrape up whatever we can. Um if it's in a water and sewer category, um in our enterprise fund, you know, that has a a revenue source, and there is some funds available there, so you'll see. Um and we can go to the next, or I can go to the next slide here, I suppose. See if we're in keeping, we're being techn- technologically challenged tonight. Not sure how I get to the next slide. Enter.
Can I get Mr. Heringer?
Yeah, this is uh our technology and uh tonight appear to be working. Okay. Okay. Okay, um typically, we will talk about projects that are more than twenty thousand dollars in capital. Um and these are the the various um funds, we have a capital fund which receives funds from largely the general fund, but it could get um grant funding. You know, that it could be other sources, they have a primarily general fund is gonna fund your capital fund, motor fuel tax um is what we use to pay roads. Uh we now have two new sources of of revenue uh in the business districts, so those are now in play now, because they are producing revenues. Um and then you have your water and sewer fund. So let's start out with capital. In our capital improvement program, we've, you know, long talked about um a a public works facility. You know, I I would like to begin addressing our public works facility, it's probably, you know, in my in my view, one of the the more needed um capital improvement expenditures um that the village should take, all you have to do is look at the public works facility. Um the trailer they're in, that facility is um dilapidated, completely outdated, and lacks appropriate facilities uh for our workforce. Um you know, we have identified a site, I don't know that this board has ever taken any affirmative motion uh or action to um make a definitive decision on where the public works facility would be, but I would propose that we use the property off of Grim Road and the Boylan Purchase. There is property available there that could accommodate a public works facility, um it's not near residential. Um it's more centrally located, and once Grim Road is reconstructed with um good access to Route eighty-three and one seventy-three, it's it's, we'll have better access for the public works crews to you know, get into, you know, certainly the east area of the village or any area of the village. Um I would like to, I'm proposing that we begin um engineering and and architecture um to start to design a facility on that on that site. Um next, we have um a downtown trail connection. We we have been listed um in the state's capital bill, and this goes back a little bit about a year or so um for a a downtown trail connection. Um we we could start, you know, doing something, I I put grant dependent on this, if we don't we haven't yet found a path to actually get the money, we've been listed in a bill that we we have some money coming, about six hundred thousand dollars for this project. But we have not gotten a grant agreement or any indication from the state that they're actually um getting this money to us. So I put grant dependent, if if we are successful in getting access to this money, it's probably gonna come through D C E O, and once we get a grant agreement um you know, we could begin to spend funds on a project like this, I I don't want to say much more, this this project could uh will likely require some property acquisition. Um so if you want to go in more detail about this project, I would suggest we go into executive session to talk more about it, under property acquisition. Uh but in general, it would be to connect um pedestrian uh pedestrian pathway to um from one of our uh neighborhood areas to our downtown. But we, I I have it in the budget in case those funds come through, if the funds don't come through, I don't think we should start the project. Um we've already talked about the Mary's Park Fence, um so we are, we have already put a down payment down, ordered that material um hoping that it shows up here in early summer, so I have that budgeted. Our our pool is, needs some maintenance, um not a huge expense, twenty-four thousand dollars, twenty-five thousand dollars, but it's basically to to make sure that that pool, the pool coating is is due for a um a recote. Um we would plan to do that when the pool closes in the fall, while the temperatures are good. Um we do have some estimates on that project, we're pretty comfortable uh that that is the number. Um so we've included that in the capital um project fund. Um and then the road program, we've been sticking with about a million dollars, um which will get you two to three miles of paving every year. And um we've been making great progress um on our our road paving, I don't think we have all the roads selected yet, but I'll certainly come back to the board. Um I I think you'll remember condition surveys where we color code pie charts and you know, how how many miles of, you know, good roads and bad roads, and there's ten different categories, and we used to have a lot of bad roads and not many good roads, and over the years, um by committing this this amount of money, a million dollars a year um you've made great progress as a community and increasing the overall condition of the roadway. So I would propose we we stick on that program. About five hundred and fifty thousand dollars of that would come from capital or general, and about four hundred and fifty would be budgeted M F T. So we're looking at a total um in fiscal twenty-two, which is the current budget, we're we're um preparing of about a million dollars, real close to a million dollars worth of capital expense, that would draw down your uh uh fund balance, a about a million dollars, it is kind of how you look at this. You probably have with a fully funded reserve at this point, in which this year you will have a fully funded reserve of about three and a half million dollars. Um you 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 have probably a fund balance beyond that of about three and a half million dollars, so if we were to go forward with with this proposal, um you'd probably end the fiscal year with something like two and a half million dollars in fund balance. So that's, that's how you should look at this.
That's on top of the reserve.
On top of the reserve. And I reported um at a previous meeting that, you know, I I think you should keep that fund balance probably above a million dollars, I don't me and Joy are not comfortable probably drawing it down below a million dollars. Um but at 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 three and a half, you know, I I think it's probably good policy to you know, spend some of that money and not continue to let a fund balance grow. Um you know, it's taxpayer money that's been collected, it should be used in communities, is my belief. But it's certainly your your, you know, prerogative to set that policy. Um and motor fuel tax. So the other, we got five hundred and fifty thousand coming out of general capital, and then there'd be four hundred and fifty coming out of our a mo- motor fuel tax account to to make that about a million dollar road program. Um and then we have um the the state has released um rebuild Illinois funds to us, they follow the same rules as M F T roughly. Um the money is really not to be used for general resurfacing, but more cap- capital projects. Um but we have had some distributions from the state, it's administered by the Bureau of Local Roads at I dot that also administer the M F T program. Um but we have some funds now, uh I think we're we're set to get about nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars um to use for, you know, a a capital road um improvement. Um we happen to have one of those in Grim Road, it's certainly a capital road improvement. Um and I suggest that we use some of that nine fifty, if not all of it, for the project, but at least two hundred. Um and that's an ongoing, that's an ongoing project, by the way, uh the engineering is it's probably forty percent complete, uh the wetland work has been done, surveys have been done, soil and geotechnical's been done. Um we have a general layout of the road, um we've made some middles to I dot, got approvals on um access access points to eighty-three and one seventy-three, we've made contact with Canadian National um and shared plans with them and are waiting comment. Um so the the project is well on its way. Um but I would suggest, you know, expenditures going forward um to use this this source of funding. That would relieve your general fund of having to, you know, outlay more money. Um so we're always looking as a staff for other additional um sources. Um what be it grant or M F T or or whatever it is that we can use to complete these capital project. We've created business district um categories in our capital. Um for those that are listening, um business districts, the the village enacted two business districts, an east district and a central district. It's a geographical boundary of largely um commercial and retail properties, there are some residential properties that ended up in it. But it's basically a a geographical boundary of a essentially a district wh- whereby the village has enacted a one percent additional sales tax, so it doesn't affect property tax in any way. Um but it 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 is funds, you can think of it like a tip district, the funds can be used similar for uh capital improvements, engineering. Um there's a little more um flexibility in business districts, um those funds can be, you know, used in a in a private way, you can probably use them for incentives or um to to partner with a a private entity to to build something on a private piece of property. Um but um the village really created those um to see, to to create a revenue source to fund capital projects that are needed like the Grim Road project, or like the Public Works project, or some of the downtown improvements that will come out of downtown beautification project, which has has begun. Um you know, so sometimes this year, as the Lakota Group completes their analysis, research, research, public um um input process where the public gets to weigh in and what they want to see the downtown improvements to look like, or the downtown beautification to look like. Um you we're gonna see probably a list of projects that gets generated um from everything from the I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna call it by the name, I'm gonna call it the the central um downtown.
Central downtown park.
Central downtown um village properties that we now own it. We all know what we're talking about, I guess, it's it's right there in the middle of town kitty corner from Village Hall, but it will address everything from that to our hardscapes, our parking um lots, um the connections, pedestrian connections between our parking fields and our our shopping areas um as as well as other improvements that may come out of that, that's that beautification project.
Are these funds separate from our general fund balance and our reserves?
Yes, yes, the question was, are they se- uh separate from general fund balance or or reserves, and and yes. We are tracking business district funds in their own uh in their own fund. So we have totals, you know, in this eastern business district, what was enacted first, there's currently one point two million dollars in that um fund, we project about a million dollars to come in in fiscal twenty-two. And you know, the the project, I think that was talked about, at least it's, at at one point on this board was uh possibly an intersection improvement um at one of the stoplights right there in front of Menards. Um in front of the Bueller Building, it has a few businesses in it. Um today, this is where Prompt Med is, Lucky Bernie. Um, today, this is where Prompt Med is, Lucky Bernie's, uh, National Rent a Car.
Kind of right there.
Yeah, there's a ski shelly there.
Um, golf shot.
Yeah.
Is that where I can lower my car as fast as I can to get out of there safely?
Y- yeah, I, I, I think um we could begin a project, at least do some of the engineering work to investigate what it would take to take that, what is now a three-way intersection and create a four-way intersection and, and better safer access into that um southern shopping area. Um, it would have to be cooperative effort with that property owner. Waste management would, would certainly play a, a part in this, but we could begin the initial work um in engineering to, you know, get the feasibility studies, traffic studies, intersection design studies done. All that prerequisite work that would need to occur before we do an improvement like that. But at least there's a source of funds to it, to do these kinds of projects. Okay, the central business district. So in, in here, I'm proposing um that, you know, on the uh, the, the central I forgot what we called it, the village-owned central downtown properties, Kitty Corner and Village Hall. Um, that we s- we hopefully later in 22 will have identified, you know, what is going to happen on that property. And I'd like to begin the design work immediately. I think that's an urgent project.
C D P, central downtown park, C D P.
C D B, okay. Um, whether, whether it's, wh- what it ends up being, I think should be derived by the public process and by this board will ultimately decide what, what, is that a mixed-use project? Is it a open space project? Is it a you know, what kind of project is it? And I think that's, you know, one of the things that we're tasking um our consultants with is deriving what the use of that property is from, from the community, from this board, from the stakeholders. Um, and that work is just beginning now. Um, but you, we, we may be in a position later in 22 to actually begin a design um process. Uh, possibly um an environmental remediation process on that property. So I'm budgeting $225,000 um this year. Um, we have a prop- we discussed in executive session of potential property acquisition, um which we may proceed in, which would qualify for business district um as a business district expenditure. Um, I would like to have the Village Hall roof um repaired and, or replaced um because it's in dire need. Um, I would like to begin.
Clarify that the flat roof, not the green roof.
Yeah, it's not, yeah, it's there are portions of the Village Hall roof that are okay. There, there's uh areas of the building that have a metal roof that are fine. Um, most of the building has a flat tar roof that collects a lot of water and has some sagging. Um, now all you have to do is walk around Village Hall, look at the ceiling tiles. Um, and you'll see plenty of spots where water comes through and when it rains and snow melts, we plenty of drips um coming through the building. Um, so it's time we, we address the roof. I, I believe it also qualifies as a business district expense. Um, our sawmill um has been mentioned a few times. I'm, I'm not sure how many have been there recently. Take a look at it. The the wheel on the sawmill is um although it's not active anymore, it's, it's there. It's one of the most photographed spots in Lake County, I'm told. Um, but there's, the wheel is dilapidated. Um, there are actually rotten members of that wheel. Um, a few boards on paddles have fallen off. Um, it's, it's time that that was, you know, addressed. I'd like to uh propose we spend some money to start designing um basically a facelift or rejuvenation of the sawmill. Um, it started out um a- as kind of an arboretum with nicely planted trees, many different species of trees and signage. And just over the years, some of these trees have um, you know, they're at the end of life. They're, they're very big now or they're, they're growing into each other. Many have died. Um, but I think we could improve the overall look of that sawmill. Um, that would be, you know, budgeted probably in, in future years, but I would like to begin the process of at least identifying what, what we need to do to that sawmill. Um, and, and what we could do with the project there. Uh, there is, uh, we bought a, acquired a piece of property next to the uh police station. There was an old blue house there. We ac- acquired that property and um the police station actually has no direct parking associated with it. So our fleet and our employees um park on uh other people's property adjacent to it. We have an agreement with an adjacent property owner, that being um the Methodist Church. Um, but I, I, I believe that that property that we've acquired to the east of the police station, um, the thinking was that would be where we would create a fenced-in um parking lot for the police department, employees and the fleet. Right, right now the fleet's exposed. Um, so most of your police departments do have something kind of enclosed parking area for their fleet and employees. So I'd like to begin the design and engineering of, of that project. And then we have the Lakota Group there. That's the, the group that's already been activated um to do the downtown beautification project. So that's a total of another mil- about a million dollars expenditure on that would be coming into the central business district. Now, the central busi- business district does not have sufficient funds um to cover that. So we strategically position the business dis- districts adjacent to each other and, and the laws allow porting of money from one district to the other. So to, to do, if, if these proposed projects were um made it into the budget and we act upon them, then we'd have to port some money. We're estimating about $200,000 um of the eastern business district money to get ported into the central business district. Now finally, water and sewer. Similar to the uh getting listed for the grant I mentioned previously uh in this, in the state capital bill, we were also listed a second time uh for the Crest Center sewer replacement. The project's fully designed, ready to go. I believe we're permitted. And um we were, we were set to really do that project when we found out that we were listed. Again, $600,000 uh from the state, likely through D C E O. Um, we're still waiting um to see how we get that money. Um, I'm, I suggest we delay the project until that grant agreement comes through with the state. And if we get the grant money, let's proceed with the project. Um, if we don't, I suggest we delay. I think it's just a matter of time before we get some of these grant funds. Um, I'm told that it should be funded in 22, but I was also told it was going to be funded last year as well. Um, we talked a little bit last time about a manhole repair project. We've done some studies on our I N I and our sanitary system and the projects that have been identified. Um, uh, one of which is uh a manhole lining and repair project. So we've identified um dozens upon dozens of manholes that either need to be rebuilt, relined, uh, and need some level of treatment to keep essentially this groundwater out of our sanitary system. Um, so we'd like to begin a project to uh, uh, start to address the problems that have been identified in those studies that uh, most of you will remember occurred over the last couple of years for I N I, which is infiltration, inflow and infiltration. And then uh, well, six, this is across the street from Village Hall. Um, basically needs to be uh uh repaired. Um, we think it's going to need a new pump and possibly the pump needs to be lowered, uh, new power supply. Um, basically rehabilitated. Um, we have I believe we had this budgeted last year. I think we held, I'm not sure why we held off on it, but um we current, we did release a uh, we're, a request for proposals um or, or bids um for this work. Uh, we're pretty confident in the $100,000 number. It should be right in there. And uh, this would be, basically be a project to get well six back online. So that really concludes uh the capital that I have proposed for this upcoming fiscal. Um, based on the board's input, you know, you may see projects, other projects you want to see. I'd love to hear about them and include them in our capital plans, if we can find a source of money. Um, there may be projects on here you don't want to see, you know, I, I really like, you know, some input from the board on what we're proposing here uh before we finalize um the budget for this year and finalize the, the C I P for this year.
All right. I, thank you, Jim. Uh, do you want the board to probably individually talk to you maybe? Because I know you still have to meet with a few trustees on some, some of their budgets. So maybe this could be something that uh you can do separately. Um, uh, I mean, we can, the board can digest this tonight and see what projects that we feel are, are urgent. And then probably, because we're gonna have to bring this back another time.
Oh, yeah. This was mainly just to present it, you know, just an idea. Part of the budgeting process was to kind of give you an idea of, you know, what projects are ongoing, what new projects we're going to start, where the money's coming from, how it may impact our budget. So, yeah, absolutely, Your Honor. Um, certainly, um, feel free to contact me um to go over this um and um provide input as you like.
Okay. Does the board feel the same way I do as far as that? Think that we'd be better off because he still has to meet with several of the trustees again for rehashing their committee budgets. So in the meantime, we can at least digest all this stuff. Uh, ask questions, ask questions to Joy and Jim and see what our priority levels are based on his presentation. Okay, thank you, Jim. Okay, the.
Excuse me, Mayor Hanson. You were asking if the board was in agreement with that. I'd like to just toss out an idea. Um, if that's appropriate or if we're going to just um hold off.
Uh, most of the board up here, I'm sorry, I, you're on the screen there. I didn't see it. Um, yeah, if you want to bring an idea up there, go ahead, Mary.
I don't know if there's anybody else that wants to say anything before me.
No, they're just going to meet individually with them and with their budgets. Cause I know you haven't gotten to your budget yet either, so.
Yeah, well, my budget, my comments are really not related necessarily to my budget, but I wanted, as we're thinking about this, I'd like to just throw up some ideas about thinking a little bit differently and maybe a little more boldly around um, the, the um monies that are going to be spent on village buildings. Um, certainly I am very much in support of the fact that Public Works needs a new facility. But then I also look at the Parks Department and realize that they probably could benefit from a new facility. I look at, we've got a senior center. We own a lot of property. We've got the Bitner property up on um, on North Avenue and we've got a Village Hall that um to me, spending $200,000 on the roof um may not be the best use of funds because I think ultimately I'd like to ask us to think about, we don't have to do it tonight, but think about maybe a bigger plan for what to do with all the properties and buildings that we have. Um, if we're going to do something with Public Works over on the uh Upper 83, I can't remember the name of that property, but anyway. Boylan, thank you. And it was a B, um, the Boylan property. Maybe we should be thinking a little bit bigger and thinking about, do we need to have the Parks building over where it is? Or maybe we should have that over on the Boylan property. I'd like us to think bigger and think about um how to best spend our money. Um, you know, Village Hall is sitting on a prime corner in downtown. Maybe we could ask the Lakota Group to give us some thoughts on whether or not that's a property that we should be thinking about um putting on the market for development. Um, we could certainly have staff move into a temporary facility if we wanted to go that route. Save the $200,000 because I would think that the money that would be for the, anybody who would want to develop that property would probably want to um change that, that building. So again, I'm not asking for us to have a long discussion. I'm just throwing that out there for people to think about. Let's be a little bit bigger thinking about um what we do with the facilities that we have and the property that we own. And that's all I wanted to state. Thank you.
What's the rest of the board feel? Cause obviously uh everything Mary uh, uh trustee, the many ex said is probably on everybody's mind. Uh, we all know what the issues are as far as what the village owns and what the village has. Also, the fact that everything sitting here is super, super huge ticket items. And that's your other issue is the funding sources and where we're going to get the money. So I think what Jim's whole goal was to pri- prioritize the most important thing. And I believe in, in the village's mind is Public Works has been neglected for probably the last 25 years. Um, I've always been under the, on the assumption that taxpayers don't need Cosmo halls and things like that. Cause I think we have facilities that are adequate. They serve the purpose. And all I hear from residents is my taxes, my taxes, my taxes. And I think that we can do all these things in time. It's just that um, I think we're trying to prioritize um the most important things. And I think Public Works being probably is the reason why he put Public Works on there. But again, I think uh your ideas are great as far as thinking outside a little bit and looking at the broader picture. Um, I think that's was part of our strategic plan and some, some of the things that we looked at in the past. But we are talking about this year's capital project. And I think Jim did a fine job putting what he felt we could afford on this budget. So.
I'm certainly not suggesting that Jim didn't do a good job. I'm just saying that maybe we need to be taking a step back and looking at everything else. And it's not going to all happen next year. But if we're going to be looking at doing engineering somewhere, you know, should we be thinking about other buildings? But like I said.
I hear you loud and clear, Mary. I think you, we've been looking at that for several years now.
Mayor, mayor, let us make a comment. I think it's a five-year good look plan. Um, the world's changing to a new work program with Zoom meetings and everything else. We may not need you know, a study after COVID where everybody's gonna be working down at Village Hall. They may be at home working for Village Hall. So the building we think today might not be the building tomorrow. So buildings may shrink to save taxpayers money. So it's all about lowering people's taxes. So, yeah, a, a long study should be done. A roof, if it's leaking, causes damage. That has to be fixed. So, yeah, we gotta do a study, long-term study on what's going to be after COVID. That's after COVID. Are people going to be working more at home? Technology's changing. So that, that, you know, we gotta all, all look at you know, people's complaint, my taxes are too high. We don't want to build a $20 million building just to have a couple, two, three meetings a month. So that, that's a long-term, that's on the wish list for everybody. So.
Thank you. All right. Thank you, Jim, for your uh good reporting. Um, Mike, do you want to come on up and uh discuss the INAC Bucks Program? I can talk to it.
If it's any consolation, that happens just like this in court, too.
Can this happen like this?
Oh, absolutely.
So it's not something.
It's not just those.
Thank you, Joy.
Thank you, Joy. Yeah, Matt. Thank you very much. Sorry for the technical issues, not my strength, I've been more comfortable in 18th century. Um, with, um, as part of the overall economic development plan, as you well know, we have been working with board, and I wanted to kind of talk about a concept tonight about I call a four-legged stool. And I think we talked a little bit about obviously the critical aspect about getting assistance out to the business community with our small business grant. I wanted to talk to you based on your input. You asked us to look at, looking at a shopping program, and I want to kind of walk you through some thoughts this evening and get your input on where we should be going. We had some issues regards to trying to create a process in-house. So we really, Mr. Kime actually did some research, and we found a company out of California called Yifty. I want to walk you through what they do. They do this over with 3,800 communities in the United States, creating a, a local shopping program. It's critical that we try to promote getting traffic in our downtown. And I think the board, some board members had some concerns about having a shopping program to encourage people to come back downtown once we get through the COVID and we start lifting some of these restrictions. So the benefit with Yifty, it's again, it's a company out of California, and it's a local shopping program. And what they do is they work with us. It's a digital gift card that works really for participant merchants. So we would actually go out and recruit the businesses. They would actually be online, there would be actually an online portal that would be hosted by Yifty. And Yifty does all administrative charge costs. So what's really interesting about this program is that we would not have to administer it. So, um, so what our responsibility to be is to work with the local employees to work with each small business and actually have them participate in this program. The program itself would be administered by Yifty. The card itself is an electronic card, it's a E-card, just like a MasterCard. The program is like a MasterCard, it's a digital card. Yifty would manage that. Actually, the person who actually buys the card itself would actually pay the administrative cost, which would be around 5%. Again, we would not have to administer a program. So the process would work is that people would actually buy these cards to be, then I made it was a, a 20 or 40 or 60 or $100. The question that we're really, is before the board is, would the village participate? The, the real benefit of this program is would the village participate by providing additional 10 or 20%, which would provide incentive. I know when we talked to the Economic Development Task Force, they had concerns of, why would this program work without some type of village participation, providing some type of cloak or some type of benefit to the shopping community? They did express some concerns about the program itself. But Yifty, this company, has worked with municipalities to provide villages where they provide a certain percentage of certain benefit, could be 10%. So if somebody provides, buys a $50 gift card, the village would throw in maybe 10%. So it would become, you know, at $55, it would be 20%. There's additional benefits. So somebody could maybe buy a $40 card to get a $50 value. So this Yifty card or a, a shopping card would be used at our local restaurants and our local businesses. Again, it would all be administered through a portal controlled by this company. We would have no responsibilities to administer the program itself. So if somebody wanted to check their balance, they actually, what, what the value of the card is, they would actually work through a website that would say, us, for example, would be something like Shop Antioch. There would be actually a shop, Shop Antioch card, or we would actually work on a marketing. But they would actually work through the, a portal, again, through Yifty. It would be at shop, let's say Shop Antioch port, uh, web page with all the participating businesses. And they would actually buy the card, the benefit, the gift card on the portal itself. They would actually check the values of the card itself on, on, on the administrative portal created by the website itself, again, hosted by this company. So a staff would not be responsible for administering the program. Staff would not be responsible for actually accounting or keeping track of everybody's values on their gift cards. So the real, again, the real fundamental question tonight before the board is, do you support a local shopping program? Do, secondly, do you support having a private company host that E-card, create that E-card? And thirdly, if you do, is the village willing to participate by providing some type of funding, which will really provide, again, the bonus or additional funds, which would encourage people to support our local businesses? So what type of, who are the customers for this? Well, again, the customers would be maybe residents who want to support our local businesses, maybe employers who want to provide bonuses to their employees. Again, people who are looking for some type of inducement. Again, if you could buy a $50 card and it only costs you $40, the village covers the gap. It would provide a benefit and it would help, again, support our businesses. So what's the end goal? What the end goal is to work with our local businesses, i.e. our small retailers and our small restaurants throughout the community. It doesn't have to be, just be a downtown program, it could be throughout the community, to actually work with our participating businesses. They would actually be on a new website created by staff. We work with Yifty, design a program, maybe work with our marketing efforts. And I'm going to work, talk a little bit about another group that we're working with, Shop Antioch. We would also potentially work with the businesses to, again, get our participating local, small businesses to participate. We would have the complete control and prerogatives to decide what businesses that we want to participate. Historically, typically, a large, big boxes don't participate in this type of program. There's a really only be catered for a small, independently owned, small retailers and restaurants. So this program itself, we could cater to however, however we would want. The real benefit, again, is trying to get people, encouraging people to shop locally and to dine out locally by creating a bonus for shopping E-card. We could create incentives by covering some of the costs. Again, this would be maybe for a defined period of time. But this program is used by many communities throughout the United States. Again, what, what are the details to get the cost itself? There's a 5% administrative cost, and the person who pays that, that's actually how this company Yifty makes their, their money back. They actually, the person who actually buys the E-card pays that. So if you buy a $100 card, you would pay $105, it would be a $5 administrative fee to basically host this program. And that, that is paid by the person who buys the E-card. So the merchant doesn't pay anything, doesn't have to pay any of that administrative fee for a Yifty. The village doesn't have to pay the administrative fee for Yifty, it's the person who actually buys the card. So that would be, there's also one additional $1 administrative fee. So I'm just putting everything on the table regards to what the costs are. Because this is a private company that hosts this program. It's not, it's not a not-for-profit, it's a company that does this. But one of the advantages for this program is it could be for a defined period of time. It could be for maybe throughout summer or, or a defined period of time, depending on what our goals are for the shopping program. Or it could, it could be a more long-term program. But this is one effort in that four-legged stool. The other thing I want to talk about, based on some discussions we had about the Economic Development Task Force, is our Shop Antioch program. We actually have a local group of individuals right now, of business owners, who created this ad hoc group promoting Shop Antioch, which the village has used. We promoted it in our website. I know the Chamber has promoted Shop Antioch on our website. But this is another partnership in trying to assist the village in trying to open up our small business economy this summer as we lift the COVID restriction. So I think, actually, we have a video, which I can show later, but Shop Antioch has some interesting ideas. I know they have some different concepts of how to promote, promote activity and promote traffic in our downtown this summer as the COVID limitations are removed. But the first thing I wanted to talk about is get your input on this local shopping program. This is based on your, your direction. So staff, I wanted to bring this to you for general discussion. Is there any support for a local shopping program? Would there be support for working with this kind of company? And this is really just a start, starting point of discussion. As there is support for this, we would actually work on more details with Yifty to try to create a, a local shopping, a both E-card bonus program over the next few months. Is there support for that? Is the village willing to participate? Is the village, village willing to provide some type of bonus system where we cover maybe 10, 15%? Those are all open questions, those are policy questions that are before the board. So I know there's probably more questions than answered, but I know the board was interested in creating this program, so I wanted to bring it to you this evening for discussion. So with that, I'll be more happy to try, try to answer any questions that you may have or discuss this further.
Trustee Pierce, anything? Have we reached out and talked to the Chamber of Commerce about the Yifty program and, and partnering with them, right?
Not yet, not yet. I wanted to get the board's input before we start, you know, talking specifically to, you know, I have not reached out to any businesses, I have not talked to the Chamber about this. I, board asked me, asked staff to look at different programs about a, a shopping local program. And that's what we wanted to do.
And what the economic community, I mean, the economic task force say about this?
The task force, I think, to be honest, they had real concerns about, does this make sense? We had several small business owners who said specifically they had concerns of whether this would be an effective program, unless there was a carrot, you know, unless the village would provide some type of subsidy, probably the wrong word, but some type of fund to help create that incentive, to create that hook. You know, why would somebody buy a $20 gift card instead of using their debit card unless they really wanted to support our downtown? Well, the reason maybe they would do that is if the village provided some type of incentive, i.e. like I've already discussed, a $5 or $10 bonus, so you're getting a $30, $30 card for $20. You know, village is covering the gap. That's where it would make sense, that's the only, you know, task force pretty much said, unless the village does that, this program doesn't, didn't, didn't see how this would benefit the local retailer. There's really no incentive for somebody to buy a Yifty card or an E-card through this site versus just using their credit card or debit card. So that was their concern. They, they didn't say it couldn't work or wouldn't work. It's just how much does the village want to participate or help fund this program?
And we would set the criteria of who participates?
Absolutely. We, we would work with the small businesses, the village has complete control, Yifty has no input on that. So we would complete, you know, if there are certain businesses you're not comfortable with, or you want to just promote certain businesses, that would be 100% within your discretion. So that is within, that's something that we have control over.
And one last thing that I'll yield the floor. I really like the local shopping, Shop Local, Shop Antioch campaign. I watch it with quite a big interest all the time. And I, I think that has a lot of possibilities to really explode if we, and do, do a lot of good brain act if we, if we support it properly. So I'd be interested in you to pursue that.
I'm sorry, who's speaking? Michael, can, are you done with the presentation? Could you take that down?
Yes. It was me speaking.
Trustee Pierce is speaking.
Who was?
Trustee Pierce.
Thank you. Sorry, I couldn't tell.
Oh my gosh.
That was it all I had, your honor. Okay, thank you. Trustee Mason?
Yeah, as a former member of the Antioch Rescue Squad, past president, that, that served over 50 years. We, uh, we, we took pride, Shop Local. This is, this is something that, that, it's, it's unfortunate that they didn't see the benefit of businesses giving a gift card out to shop local, keeping the money in town, that they didn't see the big picture. That's how the Rescue Squad stayed in business for over 50 years, no tax money. Shop local, give local, keeping the money in town. A real estate office gives a gift, gift basket. You buy a house in Antioch, they may give a, one of these gift cards out, you know. An insurance office may do the same thing. They're giving a local business, hey, welcome to the community, let me give you a gift card. You know, i- i- it's, it's really unfortunate, they didn't see the big picture of, of giving a card where you only can use it in Antioch versus a debit card. Take pride in your community, that's what's missing. That's why the Antioch Rescue Squad survived, no tax money. This is a big program, this is huge, Chamber needs to be involved. This is bigger than you know. So I'm in support of this program. So, you know, the incentive may be for businesses too. They may, they may give a discount to help the village pay for this program, the ones that are in it. So you don't know until you find out. So this needs some discussion, this is big.
Trustee Pierce, though?
I think it'd be a good idea to maybe try it, you know, for three months, like you said, the summer, and see what happens with it when everything starts to open up. But also on that, the events that the village has with, you know, through the Chamber of Commerce. Those are great events and they're very, very well attended. So maybe a little bit of both. I, I think we should really have the events, the people around here love them. But maybe it's worth a try, just to try for the summer and see what happens. If it's not well received, then that's it.
Thank you. Trustee Domenick.
Yeah, a, a couple of things. First of all, just kind of some of the feedback from the Economic Development Task Force. I think that the question wasn't that they didn't see the value and didn't want Shop Local, because these are people that obviously are very invested in having people shop locally. But it was really more a function of, would the consumer purchase this gift card for someone versus using a debit card? And I think that was what it was. It was how many people would purchase a gift card versus buying a gift using a debit card or whatever. Secondly, one of the comments that came up is that there are other ways to generate people's interest in shopping across a broad spectrum of businesses in, in Antioch. And so, Michael, I think it would be helpful for you to share with the board the information from Shop Antioch. The other thing is that, is I understand this, is this is an electronic gift card. It's not something that you can give somebody. And one of the comments that came out of the discussion was that a lot of people don't like electronic gift cards, you know? And if you read through all of the presentation from Yifty, you see that it's not a, 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 a plastic gift card that you can give to somebody. So there was some question about, you know, who would be the population targeted for that? Who's comfortable using a gift card? People forget they have a gift card, there might be a glitch, we saw technology problems tonight. So again, these are just some of the comments that came out of that meeting. The other comment that was made was that there's, the activation fee would have to be covered by the purchaser. And so if they bought a $50 gift card, it could be anywhere up to, I think, up to 5%. So the value decreases right away. Or there's, it, they, the value doesn't decrease, the amount that has to be paid to purchase that gift card. And then I think that also after a year, if there's no redemption, then there's a, a starts to be a monthly fee that's deducted from that gift card. So that if someone was awarded a $50 gift card and for some reason didn't use it, who knows, people lose them, people find them in their drawers, you know, whatever, they forget it's on their phone, that the value decreases as well. So those are some of the other comments that people had. And to the mayor's comment earlier, there was a lot of discussion about, and to trustee Peterson's comment, a lot of comment about bringing people into the community. Because when they have those events, when either the Chamber has the events, or the village, or the Shop Antioch group has events, the impact on the businesses is very significant. And I see that because I sometimes help out at one of the stores. And I see that because I sometimes help out at one of the stores and just, it's an opportunity not only for sales, but for marketing. I can't tell you how many people come into these stores on these events from all across northern Illinois, southern Wisconsin, say, oh, I didn't know Antioch had all this. This is really great. I have to come back here again. I have to bring some friends. So I think the events from the perspective of the business owners on the Economic Development Task Force would bring more people in than the gift card. I also think that there would be some value of reaching out to the business community to see if they think there's value. Because to Trustee Mason's point, you had a couple of people on the task force who are retailers, but they certainly don't represent everyone. And then my other question is, and I know the mayor has brought this up in the past, that it's my understanding that the Chamber of Commerce has something called Antioch Bucks. So I think it might be wise to go to the chamber and find out a little bit more about that program and to see how that could potentially tie into this. So I think the people on the task force, just to clarify, we're not against the idea of trying to bring more people in and looking at ways to bring more people in to the community. It didn't feel in general that this was the best vehicle and that really looking at events. Everyone is very familiar with Shop Antioch. That is actually a proprietary mark of Heather Fenzel, who owns Family Airline Antique. She does tremendous amount of work to promote the village, very creative. And I think, Michael, if, if at some point you could show the video, because she did put something together. So everyone would be aware of all of the different activities that she has been involved in and things that she's done in part of that group, or leading that group rather, to bring people into the, into Antioch. So I, I guess, to summarize, I'm not sure this is the best vehicle to achieve what we're trying to achieve. I think more work needs to be done, but on the other hand, things are starting to open up. Summer is going to be here before we know it. And so I would like us to see how we can expand and leverage the events that currently are on, on the calendar and look at ways to increase more traffic into the village so that we don't miss the summer season, which is when a lot more people are here in Antioch.
Okay, thank you, Mary. Trustee Paulus?
Yeah, I'm not so sure this would be a great vehicle either, for some of the reasons that the Economic Development Committee said. For one, we'd have to budget something. What happens when that budget money runs out? Then, you know, then are the people buying the cards stuck with paying the full amount, you know, paying over the value? There's a lot of questions to be answered in that. One interesting thing that Trustee Mason said is maybe you bring it to some of the larger retailers, like the car dealers and that, maybe real estate companies, that if you make a large purchase like that, they buy the cards and then they hand them out to people after they make a, a purchase to help out the smaller retailers in town. But I'm not sure that it would be, you know, unless we were going to put in a significant amount of money and we'd have to put that in a budget now, how, you know, how that would work. And I'm not sure we have time before the budget to figure all that out. So Shop Antioch though is a, is a great idea. There's got to be some other incentives that we could, that we could use to get people to shop downtown. But again, they're not going to pay twenty-five bucks for a twenty dollar card unless we subsidize them. And then how much do we subsidize? And then what happens when that runs out? I mean, there's just a whole bunch of questions. So not really sure unless we can get those larger retailers to, to buy the cards and then hand them out on purchases, something like that. That would take some discussion with them. And so I think there's just more, more to look at here than, than what we've seen so far. It's a great deal for the company that's doing this all because they're going to make a lot of money off it. That's the biggest advantage I see is just for the company that's producing the card.
Next question. Trustee Johnson?
I actually like this idea. I think it's pretty good. Me personally would like to really incentivize the program such as, this is just an idea that I'm thinking is if us, as a village picks up that fee per se, so that washes that off. So the, the person is not, so you're not just buying a gift card. Well, for example, if I know I'm going to go to the restaurant to go shopping in Antioch, maybe I'll buy myself five hundred dollar gift card. And instead of me having to pay the five percent, the village picks up that. In return, every time I go to use that gift, this gift card or whatever, is we try to get all the participants to get ten percent off their bill. So now you're getting double incentives where you're not losing any money. And I'm not just buying somebody a gift card, but maybe I'll buy myself this because I'm going to get ten percent off. It's not costing me anything. And in return, you know, some of the questions that I've had from residents then, because we're using taxpayer dollars then to, you know, buy this. But in, and, and the return, and the return, we're now keeping everybody again shopping local, which generates more sales tax dollars. So it's kind of offsets the fee that the village is kicking in. So again, if we promote it as a gift card that you have to buy for somebody, but if we promote this that, hey, I'm going to shop here anyways and spend a thousand dollars in the next month, you know, maybe I go and buy myself this thousand dollar card. And every time I go to, I walk into Dockers and I get ten percent off my bill, I'm going to go eat there anyways. So it's not costing me nothing to buy myself the card. I get ten percent off anywhere I shop and you get double incentives.
That's the point I was trying to make. Dockers, someone may give ten percent off for using this card to offset the fee they're going to pay. So the point is to give a card like this, if, you know, when you go to Walmart, buy their debit card, MasterCard, that costs you five, that costs you ten bucks to buy a, buy a card there to put money on their cards. You go to State Bank, same thing. They charge you for the cards. So there's a fee when you're giving gift cards out. It's no different. The only difference this card has when you're giving this gift, gift card out is you're saying, I love Antioch. Please use the card here only. That's what you're saying. Go to Dairy Queen for your ice cream. Go, go, go to where, wherever to go eat. Go, go to Johnny's, go here, please. I, I want you to spend the money in the town I love. That's what this card's saying. If someone buys someone a gift card or they mail it in the mail, you're going to the town they love.
You would have to because only the participating business.
Correct.
Right.
Correct. And that participating business may waive an extra fee in the discount.
They could, they could. I mean, there's all kinds of different approaches.
So that's where the, the partnership to the chamber, that's why I'm saying it may be big.
One, one more thing too, I want to offset, one of the arguments was, I, I think Trustee Domeniak said is, someone, people on the committee said that after a year, the fee starts going down. But what we're trying to do is generate, stimulate, keep things going. So again, if I went and bought a thousand dollar gift card for my, card for myself to use, and I have a year to use it, I mean, that's good. It pushes me to go and spend that money to keep everything rolling and keep generating dollars, keep generating sales tax dollars, keep stimulating, helping the business. If I buy a thousand dollar gift card and I just say, well, I did my duty and bought a thousand and I just sit on it for two years. I'm not, it was to help it out, nothing. So again, having a timeline, a year to spend it, I think it pushes the person to go and spend money in Antioch, which is going to, what, what we're trying to do here to stimulate our local economy.
Your Honor? I have a couple of things. Did we ever check these? You said there's quite a few people that use this program. A lot of communities, you said. You said it's.
Yeah, we reached out to a few.
One of them was Naperville.
Right? Did we ever ask anybody in Naperville how this program actually worked? Or are we just taking their word for it?
Well, no, we're starting, we're just starting this discussion. Yeah, I, you know, if, if there's any interest in the program, obviously we'll, we'll work with some other communities and get some feedback about what, you know?
I would have thought that we should have had that research done before you even brought it upon us just because we could have had some of these questions answered already. Because that, probably one of the biggest questions is how successful has this program been in other communities? Again, you've got this company that's in business to make a profit, but also try to help stimulate some business. And what percentage is it? It costs five percent activation fee?
Five percent plus one dollar.
Okay, so if the village pays the five percent, like Jerry says, and they go spend that money, we only get two percent sales tax, so we're losing three percent right off the bat. By subsidizing five percent, but we're going to go get a sale and get two percent sales tax. So that's, you know, other than having those stores make sales. So there's a lot that we have to look at here to, to make sure that this is a solid program that is going to be effective, not only for the taxpayers, because they're going to help subsidize it, it sounds like, and make sure it's going to be successful for the, for the businesses. And I agree with the, the Economic Development Commission that we have to really look at everything here and make sure that we're doing the most effective program. And I believe that what's going to make the most success, I believe, I said it earlier, is the sales are generated because of the big events. Are we better off spending more money on these events to get people in, in the stores and, and giving some kind of incentives ourselves? When people are shopping, you know, the wine walks, the chocolate fest, you know, the, the summer fest, all these different things create more programs, maybe even one event a month could probably generate more money than even these gift cards possibly. You know, again, I'm all for trying to do these things. It's just that we just have to make sure that we're spending money wisely and we're not just, you know, spending more money. And we can just, might as well just write them a check, you know? So just want to make sure that we're doing everything humanly possible. So.
Your Honor?
Yes. I, I would maybe say, it sounds like there's some more due diligence that's needed with the Chamber of Commerce and seeing how their, their feelings are on this and, and investigating place. Because like we look in the paperwork they provide, Spartanburg, South Carolina has three hundred and forty thousand residents. They've only sold twenty-three hundred cards so far, you know, for seventy thousand dollars. So maybe we do need to talk to some other communities. But I think there could be a valid point to what Trustee Peterson said about having a trial period to see how this works and, and what the actual impact is. But in the meantime, I, I'd still like to move forward with seeing what the Shop Antioch has to say. And I mean, we need to try every effort and every angle we can to help our businesses. And if something isn't successful and start costing too much money for the, the return, then, then we, we can it. Or if something's successful and isn't really costing that much money, we're making back on it or businesses are making something, we should try it and maybe continue it. So I think we need some more due diligence on this and maybe a possible trial period. But I think Shop Antioch is doing something positive right now and, and we need to work on that also because that's another angle.
I, I like the idea. I heard somebody say something about, I think it was, had that mentioned, insurance agencies, real estate companies, car dealerships. I mean, if you go, you know, our car dealership, they, some of them sell one hundred or two hundred cars a month. Boy, can you imagine if you can get them to buy, you know, these gift cards? And if they buy a car, you get a fifty dollar, a hundred dollar gift card. That mean you can, you can generate two, three thousand dollars just with one car dealership, let alone the other two that are sitting. You know, you've got three car dealerships. People are buying homes right now. Get to some of these real estate companies, they purchase a home, you can get five hundred dollar gift card, you know, from this YFTE or whatever. With, you know, that, that could probably generate a lot more interest, even if we can just go communicate with, with the service industries and some of the other big businesses. You can go to your manufacturing, you got things out there, maybe they have employee incentives. They handy for, I'll do a quota thing where, hey, you guys get so many things out, we can give you, you know, a hundred dollar gift card if you meet your quotas or something like that. So maybe they can buy a thousand dollars worth or just give it to their employees. So I think there is some merit to this. It's just that maybe that we've got to be creative and maybe figure out a way that we can get these cards in other people's hands.
They used to have the old welcome basket program in the day, where they used to give you all kinds of stuff where everybody belonged to the businesses with the welcome basket. And instead of, you know, they used to get something, something of everything from those businesses that belonged to the welcome basket for new people that moved into the community. Well, this is the perfect thing for a welcome basket where they get a card that they can take to any local business. Realtors would love it. So that's why I said this is, this is something with the chamber that this is missed because a gift card with the real estate, the insurance guys, the, the accountants, hey, come to my town. I want you to come here, not there.
I think that makes a lot of sense. I think that's a great idea. But a- again, with all the due diligence that we need to be following up on, you know, I believe, Michael, that you have that video. If you could show that to the board, because I think we need to be making a decision about whether or not we want to support Shop Antioch as well. Just as background, you know, this is something that's being done primarily by one business owner on a volunteer basis. And we need to maybe take another look at, should we be supporting Shop Antioch? And giving some funding there to help pay for printing costs of some of the materials, et cetera. But Mike, can you show that or no?
Trying, yeah, I'm trying to do that right now, Trustee Domeniak. So bear with me one second here.
Well, that's not even on the agenda, but I, I agree with you that I would assume that that's an automatic, that we should probably be supporting Shop Antioch.
Yeah, it's just, you know, as Michael put on the agenda, they talk about this and similar programs for supporting the downtown. And so Heather volunteered to put something together to help the board better understand the scope and the kinds of things that Shop Antioch does, just to inform people. Certainly, we can have a discussion at another time because there's, I don't believe that she's offered any kind of a proposal.
Yeah, I think it might be appropriate to have a, for the discussion at another time with it. I'm having some challenges.
I just think that.
But can you show the, can you show what she put together, Mike?
He's working on it now. I, I just think that we put these things through committee after committee after committee, and all we're doing is, is stalling what the real need is, and that's to get people in town to shop. So I think if we can expedite this as fast as we can, get the research done and support shop locals, you know, Shop Antioch. I think, I think we could probably even do that tonight or based on, even some feedback. So Jim, you got some, thank you.
In closing, you know, this, this program would not replace any, anything shop local would be doing or any, any events that would be happening or preclude us from doing more events. You know, when I researched this a little bit, I'd encourage you to go to YFTE's site and look at it because there's a lot of ways you can customize this. You can do it a lot of different ways. You can get corporate sponsors.
Right.
To help fund it. You can, I, I like, I like the idea to, you know, maybe for the businesses to also an additional discount if you use it. But this was never going to be a break even proposition. I really looked at it and, and maybe it's one, one way to look at it, but you, you throw some seed money out there. If the village were to commit, you know, let's say ten thousand dollars out of the budget to seed the program, that would mean forty thousand dollars of private money would come in and the merchants get fifty thousand. It, it's really just an incentive to, to encourage people to, to shop, to shop at the, the local participating merchants. I wasn't looking at it as a, you know, who's making the money. It was really based on some comments that some of the board members made to try to get some, you know, some kind of a program out there. It would certainly be COVID eligible. We did receive some money from the county. So there is a source of funds from this that does not necessarily reside in general fund, but I wouldn't look at it as, you know, a way for the village to come out even or anything like this. This would definitely be an expenditure where you're trying to get other people to combine private dollars to support these businesses. The attractive part of this is, you know, with a small staff, it, it was kind of a one stop shop how they administer it. But take a look at the site, if you have some time, the YFTE site. And it shows many examples, including many testimonials from cities and towns and villages across the country who said it did, it, it worked really well in their community. So that's all I wanted to add, Your Honor.
Do we know why they're working on this? How much Shop Antioch or Shop Local is looking for, for support? Or, there it is.
Okay, you ready?
So, you know, maybe I can add a little commentary here if it would be okay with the board. Michael, can you? So, you know, maybe I can add a little commentary here if it would be okay with the board. Um, Michael, can you send it back?
I'm trying to get some.
Can you put it back at the beginning?
Yes, I know. I'm trying to get some. Okay, that's why there's no sound.
Okay, so these are. Basically what she was trying to show here. Won't work, Mike?
No, I'm sorry, trustee Domenick. There's no sound actually on uh this laptop, it's based on this laptop. So I can't show the video with with any type of audio, so.
Well, if you can skip the audio, I can kind of walk through it. And I know that you've had some discussions with Heather.
Can you send it to her?
Yeah.
They weren't happy to send it to you.
Why would you just get it? He can send it to us.
Yeah, so so basically what it is, it's comprised of um tools that they've developed. She did all the shopping guides. Um they did a scavenger hunt event once where people had to go to all the different businesses. One of the key drivers of the events that they do is to create some type of a passport or incentive for people to go to multiple shops. Um rather than just one or two. She just started a new um series, which you've probably seen on Facebook, Meet the Owner. So she's a already highlighted two of the owners, so people can get to know a little bit more about the people that are invested in the community. And I think that um. The the question is, would the board be willing to allocate some funds to compensate her? For um this work, because otherwise it's gonna, it's probably gonna stop because she can't afford to be printing things and that kind of thing. And and uh she she would do the marketing and she would do the Facebook and all that social media stuff for the event. She said that she could come up, she had a lot of ideas when she talked to her about it, different types of events that would complement what the board and the, or what the village and the chamber does.
Do we have any idea how much she's looking for?
Yeah, is there a budget that maybe they should be working with the economic development commission and probably Michael will see, do a twelve month calendar. And see if they can, either that or a three month or maybe in a buy a vet and just.
Yeah, I think her hesitancy about putting a financial proposal together was that she wasn't sure whether the village had an appetite for even considering it. But I think that would be the next step, would be to go to her and say, okay, to your point, um. You know, what would the calendar look like? What would you be doing? What kind of social media, et cetera? With really the target being trying to hit the ground running before summer hits. So I think going back to her and if the board is willing to entertain a proposal, has any interest in supporting this, she would put it together.
Well, the board needs to know what her her appetite is as far as what she wants to put out there, because obviously they can't just say a blank check. We gotta have some kind of an idea.
I understand that. I understand that, but if, my my point was, is the board interested at all in trying to support Shop Antioch? Understanding that she would have to put together a proposal that we would have to vet and approve. If the board feels like, no, they don't want to make an investment in that program, then she's not gonna spend the time to put something together.
Well, we just spent the last meeting, we just spent money on a marketing company. So I think we got a marketing company, we got Shop Antioch. How are we gonna draw all this stuff together? So that might be a question that you bring to Michael, to to the, to this marketing company altogether group. Say, hey, we got this group out there, they're they're well underway, so maybe we can save some money with this marketing company, they can focus on other things. And we can incorporate Shop Antioch in it, so we can have a win-win instead of Antioch, Shop Antioch working on one thing. And meantime, we're, our clock's ticking with this all together group, spending the same kind of money. And it's almost like the feat and the purpose of what we're, why we hired the company to begin with.
Yeah, I think I think you raise a good point that the that Shop Antioch and should work with the the altogether group. Um, my understanding of altogether is that Antioch wide, that it's a more strategic approach. This is really tactical. This is, we can need to hit the ground running. We need to put some things in place right now um that. May just be over the summer, whatever, through the rest of the year, again, more tactical, but certainly I think it makes sense for them to work together.
Trustee Domenick, I'd be interested, but I have to know the dollar amount. If she wants five thousand dollars, that may be one thing, but if she wants fifty or a hundred thousand dollars. My 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 appetite gets a lot less.
Oh, I don't think it's gonna be anywhere near that.
That's why we're just, I think all of us are saying, we need to know some more facts.
I think Scott's right. I think uh I think the board is definitely interested. I can't see anybody on this board not being interested.
Well, you got one. You got one. I I this is a collision of the universes. You got Lakota, you got Clue, and you got this one. So I don't even know what universes, you got everybody doing. Different jobs. You got the collision of the universes. We just hired Clue, we just hired the Clue group. You got social media group, supposed to be marketing downtown. You got the the Lakota group. Now you're gonna, now you're gonna put another universe. So you're gonna spend more money. Lakota hasn't started, Clue hasn't started. So now you're gonna put a, you know, another universe in downtown Antioch. It just doesn't. You know, the 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 groups. You you've got too many groups out there. You you gotta have, you gotta have three sit down in a room and say, who's who in the Zoom?
But is it, yeah, you know, I understand where you're coming from, trustee Mason, but is Lakota group or or Clue or altogether, are they gonna? Come to us within the next month and say, I can give you seven events, eight events, nine events, whatever. I've got this material that you could distribute. Um, one of the car dealers said, you know what, give me those. Those cards that have the shopping guide or the dining guide, and I'll put them on my bills every time someone comes in for a car repair or a car wash. Um, so I I I hear what you're saying, that we can't have multiple groups, but this is.
I don't know how much we. Money, so we we might should make, Mike should make that phone call. We spent a ton of dough. They should be doing something. It's just like that retail strategies project that that we had, so they better be doing something. We can't, we can't all of a sudden put another universe on downtown Main Street. So we we've hired all these other people to do something. They better gosh darn do something. We're not gonna sit there and put another universe in downtown Main Street to do the same job. We we committed, we already committed money, so they they better get, they better get off the can and do something or or. We take the two Lakota and the Clue group and cancel their contracts. If you're gonna commit another first downtown Main Street, it doesn't make sense.
Hey, Ed.
Yes, sir.
This group, Shop Antioch's gonna do their thing anyways.
Yeah, I understand that, but I, they should all work together.
I'm sure they'd like to work together.
So that that's why you said get them all in the same room.
But they need to start now.
Yeah, I understand that.
The Clue group just started, so I get it, and that's what, I think Barry said it, I said it, the board's saying it.
Yeah.
I think what we need to do is give them some assurance that we're interested in 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 the fact that they are talented. We got a person here that's a local business owner that's taken a lot of time, a lot of efforts to create these things. She hasn't got a dime. She's done a tremendous job as far as taking on this group herself and getting this thing tremendously done. I think she's done a beautiful job with what she's been doing. I think the Clue group needs to cool up with her.
That's what I'm, that's exactly what I'm saying.
Work with them, but I think.
Thank you.
I think she's ahead of them by by a thousand steps. So I think what we need to do is give her assurance that she needs shoppers now. The Clue's gotta catch up with us and work with them and and go, I I. I I agree and I disagree. I mean, you gotta.
No, I think something's gotta be done now. That's why the Clue group has has to meet with her. How can we get this done yesterday?
I don't even think, we should ask her, wh- what is this gonna cost?
Yeah.
It's a, it's a minimal amount of money. She's just looking for some printing costs.
Right.
Different things.
I'm not, I'm not against, I'm not against that to help anybody. We need to do that.
Five thousand dollar bills away to to businesses that are struggling, you know, maybe one of the five thousand dollar bills should go right to them.
Correct.
To create it for everybody.
So it sounds like maybe the next step would be, um, and I don't, I'm not trying to direct Michael, but could staff? Contact her to see if she could put something together that would be proposal for what she thinks she could do to help bring people into the community? With some dollars associated with it? Would that be the next step?
Yeah, I mean, I I think staff, the way, the reason why we very briefly discussed this, we wanted to see if there would be any support for a future workshop to discuss this. Uh maybe at a future cow with this group with some more defined definitions. Uh they have done good work. Uh we see them as a partner with a lot of other individual partners trying to revitalize their downtown. It may be appropriate to um bring them before the board in a future meeting. And and I know Clue has already, we're working with them as we speak to um with our major stakeholders, which includes this group. To uh have an opportunity to have discussions sooner or later. So we are already working with our consultant to reach out to um Shop Antioch or 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 Heather to discuss opportunities. So that that that's happening as we speak, so, but I think it'd be be appropriate to have a future workshop that that makes sense, your honor.
I think, again, I get frustrated and I think we all get frustrated sitting up here because. We're the leaders of the community and you got business owners that are ahead of us because you know what, too much government, we bog it down. I think these business owners need to act now. They're struggling now. And I think we need to do whatever we can to to fill these stores up, and I think we need to support these people. Anything else, Michael?
No, thank you.
Anything else?
They give it an input. It's very productive.
Anything else, trustees?
I have one thing, your honor, actually, two things. Uh first of all, um, as you walk in, there's a scam alert form that the police department's kind of put together. I'm hoping they've got it on the website, that the information for it is on our website. As all of us know, scams are picked up and people are, people are being scammed. The other thing I want to do is remind everybody who's online or everybody who's here, tell all their friends and family, lock their cars. Like we're starting to see people who wanna go into the unlocked cars and take stuff out of them, so remind everybody, it's nine o'clock, check your car.
Thank you. Any other business? If not, I'll uh entertain a, so move.
I'd like to just thank Lori for putting together that terrific proclamation for you.
We have no other business that we. Yes, sir.
We haven't addressed the uh. Uh the board, a matter that's been dragging on for too long.
Well, this is not on the agenda tonight, so we didn't have anything on the agenda for that, and it's usually in a committee meeting unless it's. It's ahead of time and she gets a question, um, it's up to the board if they want to hear it. Because we typically don't have that on our committee, the hall meetings, as far as citizens wishing to address the board. I know we got you, we have you on the next agenda at our next regular meeting.
We have, the reason we like to bring it up this time is to hopefully uh there will be a resolution created for this. Because we've done everything the village has asked for, we conducted a survey. And now we wanna know what the next step is.
I don't think we can discuss it, all due respect.
You really can't discuss it. This is, this is way too uh, way too controversial, the topic to just bring up it back in without it being on the agenda.
Well, you asked for it to be on the agenda. You said it'll be at the next meeting, agenda. It'll be at our next meeting. And that's, that's what we, you asked us to put on the next meeting and we said we would. So, I mean, I just can't, in fairness to everybody else, okay. Right.
Just me, what's the question? I can't hear the speaker.
Mr. Goldbogen, Mr. Amara again.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, that's not on the agenda tonight. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I make the motion to adjourn, your honor.
Okay. All in favor?